Back to order. Before we begin, can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
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 Before we start today's, or continue on today's meeting, we just want to take a moment
of silence for two Southfield residents who are very active in the community, Ms. Eileen Feldman and Mr. John Adams, who both recently passed away. So if we could just take a moment of silence in memory of those two individuals. Thank you. We will now move on to the presentations portion of the meeting. We have a joint resolution for the Empowerment Church for their fifth year anniversary. Mr. Mayor?
I don't know if anyone's here from Empowerment Church. If not...
Anybody here? Okay. Ms. Taylor is here.[105.28][105.28](laughing)
We will be presenting this resolution this Sunday. And this is a joint resolution, the Empowerment Church Fifth Anniversary Day, Sunday, July 21st, 2019. Whereas, under the guidance and spiritual leadership of Reverend Dr. Carlisle Fielding Stewart III, a fourth-generation minister, the Empowerment Church opened its doors on July 6th, 2014, as a new faith community in Southfield, Michigan. And whereas, with a solid foundation and mission to empower people, the Empowerment Church is a progressive body dedicated to empowering a community of believers to positively and permanently change lives and the world for the greater good. And whereas, operating on the basic belief that the primary purpose of religion is to search for those universal truths that shall make all people free, the Empowerment Church offers a variety of ministries that provide resources, education, and information to the community. Encompasses growth and development of its members to enrich their lives, provides food, clothing, and shelter and support wherever there is need, promotes social and spiritual development to millennial-aged individuals and youth, empowers women and men to role models, to be role models for others, and demonstrates love through worship and service. Whereas, like many other fine places of worship, the Empowerment Church is a symbol of strength and unity to, excuse me, to its members, and continues to flourish in Southfield since opening its doors in 2014. And whereas, on Sunday, July 21st, 2019, 7:30 a.m. and 10:30 a.m., at 24350 Southfield Road in the city of Southfield, Michigan, the Empowerment Church will celebrate its fifth anniversary of distinguished service and commitment of faith, family, and the Southfield community with worship services featuring special guest Michael Eric Dyson. And now therefore be resolved that we, the mayor and council of the city of Southfield, county of Vulcan, state of Michigan, do hereby declare July 21st, 2019, as Empowerment Church Fifth Anniversary Day in the city of Southfield, Michigan. And we ask everyone to join in congratulating Reverend Dr. Carlisle Fielding Stewart III and Associate Pastor Reverend Cortland Pitt for their many contributions to enriching the lives of members of the Empowerment Church and the quality of life in Southfield, Michigan. And it's signed by the mayor and council.
All right. Thank you very much. Taylor, did you like to say a word or two?
We need a motion, I think.
Oh, yes, we do.
Also move, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Boyd.
It's been moved by Mr. Fricasse, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we approve the resolution or the joint resolution for Empowerment Church's fifth anniversary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right. It is approved. Ms. Taylor?
I just want to say thank you for this acknowledgement, and we appreciate the mayor and the council taking time out to prepare this for us. And on Sunday, if anyone would like to, please come and join us at 7:30 and 10:30 and hear Mr. Dyson speak. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I would encourage that for everyone. If you've never been there, Dr. Stewart, number one, is a very dynamic individual, and so is Dr. Dyson, who will be there as a guest this week. So you will certainly enjoy yourself. Next, we have a number of reappointments here and a couple appointments here for the mayor and Mr. Mandelbaum. You will come also as well. Our chair.
Counsel, this evening I only have one appointment. The rest are council appointments. And I will, I know Mr. Mandelbaum will bring up the folks that are to be appointed or reappointed. I have a reappointment of Ryan McKendles. I'd like Mr. McKendles to come up. Mr. McKendles has served for a number of years now on the Southfield DDA. He works for Sunrise Health Solutions.
Healthrise. Healthrise.
Healthrise.
Yeah, I like Sunrise.
Oh, did I say Sunrise? I meant Healthrise. Excuse me. I didn't even catch that. Healthrise, in the IBM building. And he also serves as a member of the Northland Study Committee. So I'm recommending his reappointment to the DDA. And Mr. Mandelbaum?
And we also have several reappointments and some appointments to the different boards and commissions. For the Commission on Senior Adults, we are recommending the reappointment for Denise Stewart and Ken Dell Murphy. For the Police and Fire Retirement Systems Board, we recommend reappointment for Dwayne Garth. The Public Arts Commission, the reappointment of Yvonne Malinsky. The Total Living Commission, the reappointment of Harmon Gunther and Sheila Gaddy. On the Veterans Commission, the appointment of John Ely. And on the Zoning Board of Appeals, the reappointment of Myra Selesny and the appointment of Mo Friedman.
If any of those individuals are here, please come forward so it can be sworn in.
There's only two.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
While they're coming forward, Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve the appointments and reappointments that were presented to us this evening.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the reappointments and appointments as presented on today's agenda. Are there any questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right. The reappointments and appointments have been approved. Madam Clerk?
I just need you to raise your right hand when you get a snap. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State, and the City of Charter, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of whatever...
Southfield Development Authority. I do.
To the best of my ability.
I do.
So, Mr. McKendles, you sign first for me? And then you'll walk around.
Shake hands?
Yes.
Well, last, once you sign in, if you would mind, coming up to the dais here, we'd like to greet you.
What?
Hi, Ray. What was your name, sir?
John Ely. Ely.
Here you go.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you, sir?
Long time no see.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations, my friend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, can I tell you, come down?
Please, congratulations.
You want to be all with me?
You go to the Empowerment Church? It's just over by the face.
It is.
No, that's the silver church.
Silver church.
Well, nice calls, yeah.
See, I've been doing this like every once in a while.
Come on, son.
Keep him a good word.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, we have two sets of meeting minutes to approve.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'd like to move the approval of Special Budget Adoption Meeting on June 17th and the regular meeting of June 17th. Support?
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve the Special Budget Adoption Meeting, June 17th, 2019, and the regular meeting of June 17th, 2019. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Meeting minutes are approved. I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we approve Consent Agenda Items A through C. Support?
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve Consent Agenda Items A through C. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next, we'll move to public hearings. Item A, we discussed in our earlier session. Mr. Crowe, you want to just speak to it?
Yes. Just for the record, PSLU-19-0004, Special Use Request of Lockmore Homeowners Association to amend their plan by laws of master deed to require minimum standards as defined by the association, was, a public hearing was held on June 24th, 2019. That a motion was made by the council to postpone till tonight. The city attorney and myself are recommending that this item be postponed again to a date certain of July 22nd, 2019, to review documents that were brought to our attention at the previous council study meeting.
Okay. Do we need to take a vote on that?
What's the date that it'll be referred to back?
Next Monday?
The 22nd.
22nd.
Also move, Mr. Chairman, support.
All right. It's been moved by Mr. Fricasse, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we move PSLU-19-004 vote to a date certain of July 22nd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right. So, all right. Item B.
I believe this item is being introduced by the city engineer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, it's coming. Okay, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In response to a petition submitted by Congregation Beth Tefilo, we're moving through the steps to establish a special assessment district for DTE to install one overhead-fed, 136-watt LED fixture mounted on a wood pole at the southwest corner of Greenfield Road and Stratford Drive. The installation, as well as the O&M costs, are to be paid 100% by the petitioner. The purpose of the street light is to provide illumination for the congregation as they walk past, or as they walk to their place of worship, as well as to any other pedestrians walking along Greenfield Road. We've got our public hearing tonight.
All right. We'd like to open up the public hearing on this matter. If there's anyone that would like to speak to the special assessment project on the installation at Greenfield and Stratford Drive, may come to the lectern. You will have three minutes. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Did you want to speak to this man? I'm sorry. Right. I'm sorry. On this matter?
About Greenfield.
On the Greenfield Road matter?
I'm sorry, sir.
On the matter on Greenfield Road in Stratford?
No.
Okay. Okay. Well, all right. So if there's seeing none, we'll call the public hearing closed, counsel. Any action? Yes, Mr. Frazier.
Who is the petitioner?
The petitioner is Congregation Beth Tefilo. It's a place of worship on the corner of Greenfield and Shelley.
Okay. Now, normally when we do a special assessment district, we have to get signatures of two-thirds of the people. Was that done?
Yeah, there's only one property that is proposed to be part of the special assessment district. So when that petitioner submitted the petition, it was really just that one property. So we still have to go through all of these steps to formalize the special assessment district so that we can bill for the operation and maintenance on their water bill. But it should be pretty straightforward. Since no one else is getting charged, I wouldn't expect that there would be anyone speaking out to oppose the installation of the street light.
Okay. And they're aware that the cost of that light will be on their water bill?
Correct. And they received a legal notice directly mailed per the law.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And under the administrators' portion is when we'll be moving forward with the resolution items for action.
Mr. Mandelbaum?
Thank you. I did speak with the congregation earlier this evening. They, because they were the only petitioner, they did not realize they should have, it would have been a little helpful to send someone, but they will have someone here for the last part of the assessment public hearing, I believe, I thought. We're going to schedule it for August 12th, but the rabbi did ask me to let the council know that they are still in favor and they're willing to pay all the bills associated.
Okay. Great. All right. Thank you. Anything else from counsel? All right. Lee, did you need us to take any action on this at this point, or is this information as of today? We're coming back. What date are we planning to discuss, to bring this back?
Under the administrators' portion this evening, we're going to ask for the recommended resolutions. So that's declaring the project of necessity and then setting the date for the hearing of confirmation.
Okay.
And we'll be back once more for the public hearing again in August.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right. We'll now move on to our communications portion of the meeting. Our first person to be recognized this evening is Ms. Pamela Gerald.
Good evening, counsel, and good evening to the residents that are watching this meeting via Comcast Cable or AT&amp;T U-verse. You know, we had a process to select a chief of police. I found out from some of my friends up north in the Genesee County area that our previous chief, Dr. Joseph E. Thomas, applied for the job. A lot of you were not here back in the '90s, and I was. The residents spoke that we wanted an African-American chief, and we got one. Dr. Joseph E. Thomas is very accomplished. He's highly educated. He's gone through all of the FBI and those higher-level trainings that you would want your chief candidate to have. And I'm disappointed to find out, and I don't know if it's true, but when I say "find out," he didn't make the initial cut. He was not one of the four candidates to be considered for the job. I don't know anything about the new chief. I do know that, coming from Detroit, there has been a lot of complaints about police brutality in the city of Detroit. The city of Southfield has a slightly different policing culture because I think the community is smaller, it's more of a closer-knit community, and it's not to say that one is any better than the other. But I'm just concerned about a whole lot of things, and I can't say them all in three minutes. So it'll be a series of concerns presented every time I get an opportunity to speak before I go and put this on YouTube. I did a FOIA requesting the scores. How do you have a chief that was here for 20 years, and the only reason why he left is because he was called by the Secretary of State to do something for the government, which anybody would be proud to get that call, to say, "I need you," at a United States/international level, and he retired? We fought very hard to get the right person the second time. I just want to know, why did we rush the process this time when our former chief, Eric Hawkins, waited 18 months to get the job? What was the hurry? And I'll ask you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Mr. Gerard Mullin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Mr. Chairman, tonight, I would like to talk about Section 11.11. Section 11.11 in the city charter. 11.11 is entitled "Public Records." This section contains just one, just one small sentence containing only eight words, eight powerful words, and I quote, "All records of the municipality shall be public," unquote. I'd like to highlight just two, two of these eight words. The first word is "all," as in "all records" and not "some records." And the second word is "shall," as in "shall be public" and not "may be public." The meaning of these eight words is perfectly clear. These words mean that Southfield's government is to be transparent in regards to city records. But instead, this city has managed to pervert Section 11.11 over the years with the FOIA law, that is, the Freedom of Information Act, that is a state law and is also designed to make government more transparent. But instead, this city has used the FOIA law to make Southfield less transparent and thus nullifying Section 11.11 of this city charter. For example, a Southfield citizen today cannot readily view nor get a copy of the minutes of the Northland Steering Committee without a FOIA request, which is needlessly time-consuming and costly to boot to the citizens of this city. Why isn't the Northland Steering Committee minutes online like other committee minutes? In fact, Section 11.11 should preclude the need for such a FOIA request. Remember now, in Southfield, according to the city charter, all records shall be made public. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Stacy Jackson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Stacy Jackson, 21685 Rougewood Drive, Southfield, Michigan, 48033. I am here once again to seek a response in regards to the residents across the city pertaining to septic tanks. I have come here now, it seems, about almost a year. In fact, it'll be a year in September. When I first came with 60 other residents, 20 of whom were association presidents. In fact, the purpose of my coming here was because residents had been coming up to me saying that they had been forced to connect to the city sewer line. I then reached out to other association presidents to have a meeting to see if this was happening. Prior to that meeting, our mayor sent out a letter to all of our association presidents basically saying that I was inaccurate. After that, our city administrator mentioned that there was a flub in the letter and that the code enforcement person removed their date and put their new name or something like that, giving a defense to it. You see, historically, when people like me come to speak for justice, it has always been a delay. In fact, the very signage on the door commemorating women's right to vote didn't include people that looked like me. It had to fight 45, 50 years after that to vote. I am feeling that same discernment that my foremothers and forefathers had when they came seeking justice for rights and being denied the opportunity to get it. Right now, I've had council people and mayors and city administrators basically try to discredit me for the truth. I've had people tell me that there's been a flub or a mistake. Well, the letter sent out last year compared to the letter sent out the month before that from three other people, all different. So I asked this council, which variation of that letter was sent out to the residents when the population was 70% white? In 1999, 2000, 2001, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 2009, when this city apparently put on a very hush-hush moratorium on that ordinance and then started it back up in 2016. I am patient, and I am not enduring as much as those before me have, but I do demand an answer, and I am looking for one. The residents deserve it. And while this city may not have written that ordinance in racism, its application has been blatantly so. What are you going to do? Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Mr. Keith Harris.
How you doing today? I'm here on the behalf of All Race and Life Matter, P.O. Box 2679, 48037. You know, today I seen four women in Congress of all races, black, Latino, Arab, and one from Somalia, all elected to our council, our Congress. And all of them stood there proudly to be who they are. I'm proudly standing here saying, "I'm black and it ain't gonna ever change. I'm not gonna change. And I'm gonna stand here and I'm gonna fight until we have the same rights that Jews have, whites have." I am tired of black businesses being attacked in this city, black homeowners being attacked. We're 73% of this community, and we should be used for more than just revenue. Just revenue. That's all black people are used for. I watched Bonnie Finch get a $30,000 raise. We should have hired Bonnie Finch to be the chief attorney, because Sue Ward-Wakowski didn't give her a $30,000 raise. What is she doing now that she didn't do when...
From Detroit. There has been a lot of complaints about police brutality in the city of Detroit. The city of Southfield has a slightly different policing culture because I think the community is smaller, it's more of a closer knit community, and it's not to say that one is any better than the other. But I'm just concerned about a whole lot of things, and I can't say them all in three minutes. So it'll be a series of concerns presented every time I get an opportunity to speak before I go and put this on YouTube. I did a FOIA requesting the scores. How do you have a chief that was here for 20 years and the only reason why he left is because he was called by the Secretary of State to do something for the government, which anybody would be proud to get that call to say, "I need you," at a United States/international level, and he retired? We fought very hard to get the right person the second time. I just want to know, why did we rush the process this time when our former chief, Eric Hawkins, waited 18 months to get the job? What was the hurry? And I'll ask you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Mr. Gerard Mullin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Mr. Chairman, tonight, I would like to talk about Section 11.11. Section 11.11 in the city charter. 11.11 is entitled "Public Records." This section contains just one, just one small sentence containing only eight words, eight powerful words, and I quote, "All records of the municipality shall be public." I'd like to highlight just two, two of these eight words. The first word is "all," as in "all records" and not "some records." And the second word is "shall," as in "shall be public" and not "may be public." The meaning of these eight words is perfectly clear. These words mean that Southfield's government is to be transparent in regards to city records. But instead, this city has managed to pervert Section 11.11 over the years with the FOIA law, that is, the Freedom of Information Act, that is a state law and is also designed to make government more transparent. But instead, this city has used the FOIA law to make Southfield less transparent and thus nullifying Section 11.11 of this city charter. For example, a Southfield citizen today cannot readily view nor get a copy of the minutes of the Northland Steering Committee without a FOIA request, which is needlessly time-consuming and costly to boot to the citizens of this city. Why isn't the Northland Steering Committee minutes online like other committee minutes? In fact, Section 11.11 should preclude the need for such a FOIA request. Remember now, in Southfield, according to the city charter, all records shall be made public. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Stacy Jackson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Stacy Jackson, 21685 Rougewood Drive, Southfield, Michigan, 48033. I am here once again to seek a response in regards to the residents across this city pertaining to septic tanks. I have come here now, it seems, about almost a year. In fact, it'll be a year in September. When I first came with 60 other residents, 20 of whom were association presidents. In fact, the purpose of my coming here was because residents had been coming up to me saying that they had been forced to connect to the city sewer line. I then reached out to other association presidents to have a meeting to see if this was happening. Prior to that meeting, our mayor sent out a letter to all of our association presidents basically saying that I was inaccurate. After that, our city administrator mentioned that there was a flub in the letter and that the code enforcement person removed their date and put their new name or something like that, giving a defense to it. You see, historically, when people like me come to speak for justice, it has always been a delay. In fact, the very signage on the door commemorating women's right to vote didn't include people that looked like me. It had to fight 45, 50 years after that to vote. I am feeling that same discernment that my foremothers and forefathers had when they came seeking justice for right and being denied the opportunity to get it. Right now, I've had councilpeople and mayors and city administrators basically try to discredit me for the truth. I've had people tell me that there's been a flub or a mistake. Well, the letter sent out last year compared to the letter sent out the month before that from three other people, all different. So I asked this council, which variation of that letter was sent out to the residents when the population was 70% white? In 1999, 2000, 2001, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 2009, when this city apparently put on a very hush-hush moratorium on that ordinance and then started it back up in 2016? I am patient, and I am not enduring as much as those before me have, but I do demand an answer, and I am looking for one. The residents deserve it. And while this city may not have written that ordinance in racism, its application has been blatantly so. What are you going to do? Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Mr. Keith Harris.
How you doing today? I'm here on the behalf of All Race and Life Matter, P.O. Box 2679, 48037. You know, today I seen four women in Congress of all races, black, Latino, Arab, and one from Somalia, all elected to our council, our Congress. And all of them stood there proudly to be who they are. I'm proudly standing here saying, "I'm black and it ain't gonna ever change." I'm not gonna change. And I'm gonna stand here and I'm gonna fight until we have the same rights that Jews have, whites have. I am tired of black businesses being attacked in this city, black homeowners being attacked. We're 73% of this community, and we should be used for more than just revenue. Just revenue. That's all black people are used for. I watched Bonnie Finch get a $30,000 raise. We should have hired Bonnie Finch to be the chief attorney, 'cause Sue Ward-Wakowski didn't give her a $30,000 raise. What is she doing now that she didn't do when Sue was here? I'm looking at so much corruption in this city, and I will say, the best decision this city made was hiring Barron, 'cause we sure don't want that Uncle Thomas back. The boy didn't know if he was black or white, and he allowed more abuse to happen to black people than anybody I've ever seen. My brother's a top cop, and I bleed blue in my family. I know what justice is all about, and it's not here in Southfield. We're fighting every day to be equal. All you got to do, Mandelbaum, is say, "I'm Jewish." Well, Jewish people have been ripping us off and economically exploiting blacks for years. For 100 years, we've been here. It's a right to own a home. It is a right to not be in debt. We have the right to say no to these loans that you wanna force us into. It is time to treat us all equal, all of us, not just one race better than the other, but all of us. That's what empowerment is all about. We gonna talk about empowerment, talk about equal empowerment. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Toby Rhodes. Our next request for recognition is Kristen Johnson. Our next request for recognition is Harold Hill.
Hello, Harold Hill, Southfield resident for many, many years. Last week, the council meeting, there was a discussion about the septic system, and I think one of the councilpeople brought up that it was 1,227 residents that were still on the septic system. I talked to a former councilperson, and they suggested we look at the actual magnitude of the real problem. The magnitude is, how much is it really costing? So out of the 1,227 people, if you look at them and say, "There's $200,000 in their homes," that adds up to about 240, or over $245 million. And if they defaulted, that would be a lot of tax revenue. But I wanna switch gears for a second, and I can get back to that, 'cause I did point some more numbers when we were talking. I wanna talk about the social impact, the actual social impact of the septic system. I'll just share with you a true story. I've been mentoring a young man for several years, and they were renting a house in Southfield that had a septic system. Because of that septic system problem, something happened, they went to court, but the owners of that house rigged something, whatever, but they were being evicted. And so I stopped by, I used to have them working for me all the time, doing different things, because he's autistic and he's finally finding a job. But what happened, because they don't process information the same, they had to move out that next day, and he probably had to load the truck himself. So he acted out, it caused a police situation where he, he just started throwing rocks at a window in a, at a building, or a brick or something, because he didn't know how to get out his frustration, because they had to move quickly, and he couldn't understand that. Now, this young man doesn't have a father, mother died in a car accident at 3 years old. So I've been working with him to teach him some things. And when I went over there, I just happened to go over there early, and lo and behold, he was really nervous and agitated. I said, "What's wrong?" I didn't mention his name. "What's wrong?" He said, "I did something wrong." And he told me what he did. He said, "But they're coming to get me." He ran into the garage and closed the garage door. I said, "No, you stand up for your problems. You don't ever run because it could cause more of a problem." Thank goodness I'm part of the Police Citizens Advisory Board, because, yep, five minutes later, police came to get him, and they, they, we talked it through, and they didn't bother him. But just because he acted out, it could have been worse. And I'm glad I was there, and I just told him that he will pay for the damages. But they did bring the person from the K-9 union, and he knew who I was, and so they actually just got a chance to talk. But it could cause more of a problem.
Time is up.
Thank you. I'll finish this next time.
Our next request for recognition is Carmen Johnson.
I have 10 copies of this. I've been asked to make 10 copies of this.
Give it to the clerk.
My name is Carmen Johnson. I am a resident of the Lockmore Homeowners Association. I am the original owner of my home, which I purchased in 2007. I've been, of the last 30 years of my life, I've lived in Southfield for 26 years. I've raised two children and educated two children in this city, and I've had a grandchild in this school system as well. I have many family members here. I am here because I do not believe that truth is being told to the city regarding the Lockmore Homeowners Association. It is my experience that the homeowners' board of directors operates similar to an organized crime unit. I've heard many of the previous speakers speak of the racial disparities and discrimination, and that occurs, and that's a normal, unfortunately, a normal exchange in our society, but the part that we haven't discussed is the one on black-on-black crime. Lockmore Homeowners Association is a black board, and they're committing a crime on the black residents who reside in that subdivision. I heard someone speak of transparency. I have never, in the 12 years I've been there, been able to review the books despite numerous requests. Upon a review of recent submitted bank statements, there are several thousand dollars that have gone unaccounted for. We have, again, I've heard people request minutes. I have documentation on several occasions that I've requested minutes from the secretary, whose response was, "I keep them in the event we have to go to court." There are several current cases currently being litigated by homeowners against the Lockmore Homeowners Association. I understand many of them have come here, and they have told their story and presented a story, but I believe it's time the other side of the story be told. I have documentation that one of the residents, where they're trying to manipulate the residents to say, "This is a black versus white issue." It's not a black versus white issue. It's a fair versus unfair issue. It's a just versus unjust issue. It's a right versus wrong issue, and ultimately, it boils down to a legal versus illegal issue. So I'm asking you people to please believe, and my documentation will show, that Lockmore Homeowners Association board has not been forthright with you. They have not been forthright with us who live in this city, in that subdivision. I won't sell my house because I love my house. It's a beautiful home. I love my city after 30 years. And also, I would feel sorry for exposing an unassuming victim to that social-political exchange that takes place in Lockmore. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gregory Keeler.
Greg Keeler, Southfield resident. Last week, I came to a council meeting which was held in the room next door, and it seemed to be overfire code recommendation for amount of people that should be in there. There was a discussion that was gonna go on about my street. I was out in the other end of the building because there was no room to get into that room. I couldn't understand, how come, if I have to follow the codes and rules of law, how come you don't have to follow the codes and rules of law? How come that meeting wasn't shut down and it wasn't moved over to here? How come there wasn't adequate space? Adequate space done so people can come in and come out? You have people that are handicapped, have disabilities, that come to these meetings, so that was totally non-ADA compliance at that point in time, because you really couldn't move around. It really wasn't safe for them to be in that room. And I just understand, I don't understand, how is there a difference between the residents and the people that sit up there? How come that wasn't stopped? During that meeting, when they brought up, finally, my street, one of the things they left out was, as if that code for the sewer lines were put in in 2016. They were put in in 1990. So if it was put in 1999, and you had a dorm built on the street that had no sewer line? How come it was even thought of? How come it wasn't even brought up in all the process? You go through and everything else and not stop to say, "There's no sewer line? There must be a sewer line to put a dorm here." You've already had one meeting where you brought up that things should be done to make sense. This does not make sense that you did this, and you did it without even thinking about it. The sewer line was placed down there during the time that the dorm was talked about, but the sewer line was removed after we got the dorm moved back from off of our street. Seems kinda funny to me. And then it seems like you made a bunch of changes in between. So this thing has never been written right, will never, ever be written right. And the fact that you're bringing up how much it costs, you didn't bring up how much it was cost to be put in at the time that it was an ordinance. That's what you should be looking at, not 17 years later, not after you hadn't had two issues that would have paid for the sewer line being put in, because that dorm would have took care of every last issue there was. And if these meetings are supposed to be ADA appliance, when this man right here walks up there, and he has to crawl through people and get through them, and it takes some time to get there, he should not be mine. And it doesn't feel good for anybody else that's handicapped for that to happen.
Thank you. Next, we have Herman Gunther.
Herman Gunther, 19101 Greenspruce. I am president of Cranbrook Village Homeowners Association, 1, 3, 4, and 5. Last year, last year, we had an accident on Rock Creek in Southfield, 12 Mile, where a lady swiped, swiped one of our walls and knocked it down. She didn't have insurance. The week after the accident, she moved. The police department, and, you know, agreed with us, and they're still hunting for her. They don't know where this lady disappeared to. So obviously, my homeowners' association had to pay the bill to get that wall replaced. Last Thursday, there was a commercial truck parked on the sidewalk before Westbrook Parkway and 12 Mile. A lady tried to swerve around it to get into it. She lost control and knocked over the west side wall of our subdivision entrance sign, and also moved the foundation of the northern wall. Luckily, we were having repair work done on those walls, you know, tuck pointing and all that stuff, so the contractor was there. He saw the accident. And unfortunately, when the police came, they had to impound her car because she didn't have any insurance, again. Right now, I'm asking, you know, right now, the estimate for the replacement of both walls is closer to $11,000, which our homeowners are sorry, because right now, we're in the process of getting bylaws approved, and without the bylaws, we can't get insurance. So we got, we're between the rock and a hard place. Now, how is it that people can buy insurance at many places along 8 Mile Road that advertise for, you know, "Buy insurance, keep it for a couple months, and then cancel," and nothing happens? Either to the insurance companies that issue the insurances, or, you know, in this case, I know that her car was impounded by the police department because of this. So I don't know if it'd be wise to have the city make an ordinance to hold these insurance companies liable for accidents that these uninsured drivers cause, but something ought to be done at this local level, and maybe later on in Lansing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Sarah Habbo.
Good evening, Sarah Habbo. I just have a request for some updates on things that I've brought up that I've not gotten a response on. Still haven't heard back regarding the Henry Ford Optimize issue with their detention pond. And if you could hear earlier, it's raining now again. And so I'm just imagining that there's now more water in those ponds that is stagnant and continuing to cause mosquitoes to flourish in our neighborhood. I still haven't heard back regarding the June 17 meeting regarding the server breach that the city had, and to what extent that breach was, and if any residents' information was captured by that breach. And then, I just have a question about the new policy that we have regarding residents being able to come to city council meetings to speak. If the meeting that's recorded doesn't start until 7:30, could it be possible to allow that signup sheet that's outside of the chambers remain out there until just before 7:30 so that residents who maybe don't get out of work in time for the first part of the meeting can actually sign up to speak if they have an issue to speak on? And then, my last question is, is there a reason why the entire meeting isn't just televised from start to finish so that residents have an opportunity to hear the reasons why you make your decisions? Because I think some issues that residents have would be resolved if they could hear why you made the decision you made. And I think it would be really beneficial for the people who come to the meetings or who are unable to come to the meetings to be able to hear your thought process, and might alleviate some of the questions that people have regarding why you voted on an issue the way you voted on it. Because all we hear is, you all come in, and you just approve your consent agenda, and that's all that people get from the meetings if they're watching on the television. So I just ask that, if there's a reason why you aren't recording the entire meeting, that you just let us know what that is, because to me, it makes sense for you to record the entire meeting. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Kimberly Smith.
Hello, council. I've been a resident of Southfield since 2009. I had an incident in 2017 where my house got a little fire, had a little fire. First of all, let me start off saying, I'm not incompetent. I did have insurance on my house, all whilst I've been living here in Southfield. They went up on my insurance extremely, like $120. So it was kinda like, a little too steep for me to pay. To make a long story short, I had a small fire in 2017, and I've been rectifying and trying to repair and get all the repairs done, but over the winter, the plumbing burst. So I've contacted, I've been trying to get in touch, well, I spoke with Rick. Rick said that he could help me get some of the repairs done. The taxes are already paid up. I'm consistent on my taxes. I've been trying to do the best I can to try to keep that, keep the property together. Like I said, I've lived there for over, since 2009. I purchased a home, the home is paid for. My credit is substantial, where I can get a loan to take out on the house. Rick told me about a program that I can fit a 1%, if I stay in the home, they can help me fix up, get the house put back in livable conditions. All of that qualifies for insurance. The house is not applicable for insurance. The house is not applicable for, for someone, for me to even take out insurance on the house. I'm at a standstill, I don't know what to do. I've resorted down to to stay for shelter. I live in another place. But I spend my money where I can't even live. And I can't even get any help. I'm just asking for someone to give me some kind of guidance or some kind of leadway where I can get some kind of help to put it back together. So I can go back in my home. Well, it is.
Can you give us your address?
I mean.
We got it up here. Lee Wright?
Yeah, twenty-two four hundred, Lee Wright. That's right off of Nine Mile and Telegraph.
So we've got a name and number if we can, if there's anything that the city can do, which I'm not sure if we can. If there's any programs we can guide you to, we'd be glad to do that.
If you can wait around it, the meeting won't go much longer. I'd be happy to talk to you.
Okay, also, the water bill. I'm concerned about my water bill. My water bill, the water, by the plumbing bust bursting over the winter, the meter busted. So I had the water company come out, Southfield, replace the meter. Well, over this winter, it burst again. So I had them come out and replace it again. So all of those bills transformed over to my, rolled over to the taxes.
We can talk about that as well, too.
But now, I still have.
As long as we can, we can see that you made an effort to get it fixed. I understand, it's all kind of a combination thing, really. So again, the mayor said he'd be glad to talk to you after. What we can do, we'll do.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. Listen, Cindy.
No problem. Last, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Mannion.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. For the audience, my name is Michael Mannion and I serve as the Community Relations Director for the city. I was asked tonight to give an update on the status of Almost Home that serves as the city's official animal shelter since two thousand six. And we just wanted to provide some information relative to that process. The city of Southfield continually reviews all city vendors and contractual agreements in an ongoing effort to maximize every tax dollar spent. We issued an RFP, which is a Request for Proposal, in March to, for management of the city's animal shelter to ensure the best possible service for our community. The C D received only two proposals back, including Almost Homes. However, after thorough review, neither of these proposals will provide the level of service that the city requires. As such, the city is currently in the process of exploring other viable options for management and operations of the city's animal shelter. Since Almost Home has served in this capacity since two thousand six, the city has continued to do our best to work with them. Unfortunately, we've had several issues throughout that time. With every municipality, the city's primary concern is the focus of the health, safety, and welfare of the community. As such, the primary function of the city's official animal shelter is to serve the needs of Southfield residents to protect the community from vicious animals, house and protect stray animals until they can be reunited with their owners, and to facilitate animal adoptions when owners cannot be located or are surrendered for adoption. Smooth and efficient operation of the city's animal shelter is essential to providing the community with this extremely important and valuable service. Despite the continued efforts of the city to work effectively with Almost Home, including investing recently more than three hundred thousand dollars to improve and upgrade the shelter, the organization has repeatedly failed to provide a consistent and satisfactory level of service for our community and residents. Moreover, the organization does not pay the city rent or any of the utilities at the shelter. Further, several Almost Home employees and volunteers have also recently made open and veiled threats against city employees, elected officials, as well as the city's animal warden in particular, a sworn police officer. Some of the many violations and issues with Almost Home Animal Shelter historically and currently include failure to accept animals brought in by the Southfield Police Department and animal control officer as required, failure to accept animals surrendered by Southfield residents, failure to adhere to safety protocols and procedures resulting in several very serious injuries to Almost Home employees, volunteers, and others from vicious dog attacks, spraying and or neutering animals without the permission of owners, and disproportionate number of animal adoptions not awarded to Southfield residents. Moreover, the city categorically denies any claims of bias or mistreatment throughout the bid process, as well as any claims that the city or its agent acted improperly with regard to any specific animal or its owner. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Before going on to the council portion of the meeting, I did just want to reiterate the fact that normally, the way that we have done communications in the past have been to sign up the Wednesday before, at, by noon, before the next or upcoming meeting. Now, that also can be done online, if I'm correct, Madam Clerk.
Until noon, until noon.
Until noon, then.
The day of.
The day, till noon, the day of the meeting. As well as, there is a clipboard that sits outside of the council chambers that you have until six o'clock at the start of the meeting to sign up to speak as well. So we just wanted to make sure that everybody knows we're trying to make sure that everybody has the opportunity. But I understood that it was not clear what the clipboard was for and so people didn't necessarily know that that was available. So we want everyone to know if you come to the meeting, even on the day of. And again, the meeting starts at six. We recess for a period of time and then complete the meeting starting at seven thirty. So that is why six o'clock is the time that we have designated to take in all the names, so. That being said, council, do we have anything that you would like to speak on? Mr. Brightwell?
As usual, I have a couple of veteran items that relate to the VA. And a lot of times, some of the things I have are kind of serious. And some of them are kind of lighthearted. But the one I have now is the Department of Defense and also the Veterans Administration and the IRS. Let the veterans know that time is running out to claim a refund of up to three thousand two hundred dollars. The IRS is reminding veterans who receive disability service payments after nineteen ninety-one and acclaimed it as income, that the time may be running out to claim their refund of up to three thousand two hundred dollars. Combat Injured Veterans, the Combat Injured Veterans Fairness Act of two thousand and sixteen state if you receive the payment after January nineteen ninety-one and before January one, two thousand and seventeen, and you received an eligibility letter from the Department of Defense in July of two thousand and eighteen, you can file a ten forty X amended tax return. The deadline for filing for the refund is one year from the date of the letter. And also, the IRS posted this on their site and the VA posted on their site. But if you have additional information, I will have the forms out, these particular announcements out on the desk out front. But the IRS has a special telephone line, eight-three-eight, toll-free, eight-three-eight-five-five-eight, extension, excuse me, that's a toll-free number, eight-three-three-five-five-eight-five-two-four-five, extension three-seventy-eight to consult with an expert. And I know a lot of people might not be veterans that are listening in or in this particular room. But all of you probably know someone, you have a friend, a sister, a brother, or neighbor that's a veteran, just let them know that the IRS is offering a refund to anyone who received combat disability pay from nineteen ninety-one, three thousand two hundred dollars. And that is it for tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor? I was just going to finish the council first. We'll recognize Ms. Fluke.
Okay, thank you. To respond again to Ms. Habbo, last meeting, we did ask for, through the chair, to the city administrator. He did ask that our city engineer, as well as code, respond or go out and take a look at Henry Ford Optimize and the retention ponds. And I have not seen a response, but we were, you were supposed to report back to us today at tonight's meeting. And we didn't see anything. I haven't seen anything.
There is an email, Henry Ford Optimize has been cited for the private entity, the owner of the building is responsible for the maintenance of that.
Retention?
The retention pond, thank you. The code enforcement had been, before the inquiries, had been taking photos and monitoring it because of other complaints. It's been treated for mosquitoes. And it had, they have been sent a letter from code that there is a violation. And I don't know if Ms. Schultz is still here, city engineer? And if she can come up and speak to that.
Okay, so both the property owner and Optimize were sent letters. Because Optimize isn't registered as the owner locally at that address. So we sent two letters and did hear back from the company that takes care of all of their site maintenance and they asked for some copies of plans. And at that time, that's as far as I know. So I'm not sure if they have the work scheduled yet, but that's something that's part of our process that we'll be following up with them. But it was good to see the positive response that we got as soon as they received the letter. So I'm assuming there will be some activity going on out there to get that to drink quickly.
And you'll follow up on that and report back to us, please?
Yes, I can do that.
Because that's one of the things that I'm taking on as a personal charge. We do hear a lot from our residents. And we are doing a lot of things behind the scenes, but we don't report it back. Like tonight, we didn't know that you had already did some work on that, as well as code. And we had no idea what Henry Ford Optimize was doing. So it's important that we have that two-way conversation. So I appreciate you standing before us and giving us an update.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lee.
Thank you, Fred.
Anything else? All right, Mr. Mandelbaum?
Thank you, just a couple of public service announcements. We currently have the two thousand and nineteen Southfield Photo Prize up on the website. You have, anyone can go and vote from now through August thirtieth for one of twenty-five pictures that were selected by the Total Living Commission. You can go on the website, on the homepage, look for the Photo Prize two thousand and nineteen. Also, if you walk around our municipal campus, you can see many of the pictures as well as the photographer who took those. So feel free to submit your vote now through August thirtieth. Also, we've been having our gazebo concert series during, on Tuesday evenings at the Berg Historical Park. They take place every Tuesday from seven to eight-thirty. Tomorrow, we'll be having Straight Ahead perform for the evening. And prior to the meeting, our Parks and Rec Department has activities for children ages five through twelve starting at six o'clock, five-thirty, five o'clock. From five to seven, and right before the concerts, they have programming for kids ages five through thirteen, different types of activities for everyone that evening. Also, this Saturday, we will be having our Rhythm and Rhyme Music Festival here on the front lawn. It's a free event from one to nine with multiple artists performing. There will be food for purchase. In the event that there is rain, the concert will be moved indoors, as it was last year. We're hoping for good weather, though. But again, that's this Saturday from one to nine. That's right here, City Hall. And this is in conjunction with Oakland County and as well as Oak Park Recreation. So it's, last year, there were numerous, it was great reviews. And we're hoping for another great turnout. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Morse?
Yes, I just wanted to address city administrator with regards to another one of Ms. Habbo's questions in relationship to the server breach.
I'm sorry, to the what?
The server breach. She asked a question about the server and if you have any data on that?
I need to learn more. I'm not aware of, I've not been briefed on a server breach. I'm not aware of any information having been released. And I'd like to, I'm sending an email out, trying to find out. And if there's information she's aware of.
If I may, it wasn't a server breach. We had a failure in our, one of the chips that we have in our computer room. So they were just replacing the chips.
Okay.
I believe that Renee, who works, who's our IT manager, our acting director, I don't know what his title is.
He's acting.
They were just replacing the chips based on a known issue.
That is the malfunction from the manufacturer, Cisco, but it was not a server breach.
We didn't hear anything like that, so I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes, I'm announcing tonight that I'm retiring from the council at the end of my term in November. I have some outside challenges. I have some family issues that I need to take care of. And I'm retiring because, and it was not an easy decision for me to make with, along with my family. But I promised the voters that if they would elect me to this council, that I would serve with the highest integrity and ethics to provide them the best service that I could provide. And I find that the unscheduled things that I need to deal with outside won't allow me to be at council meetings or behind the scenes. Not at this meeting. And in fact, this meeting is only about twenty percent of everything that we do in order to be a good council person. So I'm really kind of talking to the challengers because there will be a new face on council. One of the challengers will be elected. But I want to, if I can take a couple of minutes, I want to give you a little bit of advice that I've learned over the years. And there are about seventy thousand people in Southfield. There are seven of us sitting up here, which means that collectively, each one of us is responsible for about ten thousand people in the city of Southfield. They don't all look like you. They won't all act like you. They won't all, they won't all think like you. But you will still be their representative and have to represent them. At this meeting, as you've noticed tonight, people will come to the microphone and they will express concerns that they have. Most of the people that come to the microphone are serious about their concerns, but they're very emotional. And they have emotion on their side. And sometimes, the facts get a little scrambled. So I'm suggesting to whoever sits in this seat, make sure that you understand the facts and you don't always, or don't act on the emotions. Because, I guess my own Myronism, if you will, a hundred percent of the time, you will be fifty percent wrong. And what I mean is, if you vote yes, the people that want you to vote no are angry at you. And if you vote no, the people that want you to vote yes are angry at you. So my suggestion is dig out the facts so that you can explain, look somebody in the eye and explain to them how you got to the answer you got. And that's the best you can do. Even though they may be angry, at least they may understand. If you do it just on emotion, that may not set well. The other thing is, it takes four votes to get anything done here. So it's a team effort. And you need to make sure that you're on the team. If you're always bucking the team, it probably won't go very well for you. One of the things that really bothers me about my not being able to participate like I can, or like I should, is there are other outside organizations that have a wealth of information. And I'm talking about the Michigan Municipal League, the National League of Cities. I haven't been able to attend the National League of Cities in a few years, so I had to give up my position on a committee on the National League of Cities. But there's all kinds of information that you can get from both the Michigan Municipal League, National League of Cities, and other organizations in the area that will give you facts that you can deal with to make the best decision you know how. So whoever gets elected, I'm expecting you to do the best job that you possibly can, knowing full well that in the beginning, you're going to need training wheels. But if you study and work, you'll make it. So good luck to whoever gets elected to replace me in November. Thank you.
All right, well, I wasn't expecting that.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, if I could go first, I just want to say, Mr. Frazier, that I learned so much from you. I've been on council for maybe close to six years now, five or six years or so. But you always kind of kept me under your wing, and I just want to thank you for all the wisdom and knowledge that you have given to me and brought to this council over the years and your service to the city. And you will sorely be missed.
Thank you. It's been my honor to serve the city. Mr. Vakas.
Myron, that's a shocker to me. You've contributed so much to the city. And as a councilman, and just being a person who is a resident of the city all these years, and being there for many people who have questions, taking the time with them, and being patient with them. And we go back quite a few years together.
We do.
It's been a real pleasure in knowing you and your family, and I know the situations you have. And I just am going to miss you a lot.
Thank you. Mr. Brightwell?
Myron, I've known you for quite a few years, and obviously, I knew you before I got on council, by way of the telephone company. And since I've been on council, I definitely appreciate your wisdom, your insight, and also your forthrightness, because sometime, we will start going down a certain track or certain, and you will periodically bring us back to, you know, get us back on the train track. And I just definitely appreciate what you've done for me since I've been on council. And I definitely appreciate what you've done for the city, what you meant for the city. Wherever I go, when I attend the Michigan Municipal League or the National League of Cities, people always ask, "How's Myron doing?" You know, everybody knows you and everybody cares about you. Thank you, sir.
I'll be around.
Yes, indeed. And I'm sure we'll have another, we'll have an opportunity before your last day to recognize you in a more official way. But I think your sentiments are consistent throughout the council.
Yes.
All right, so that being said, we'll move on to the mayor's comments.
Well, a lot more will be said, Myron, but we will certainly miss your presence. I understand your reasoning. I know you've been through a lot. And we've been collaborating since shortly after you moved to Southfield. So your contributions have been tremendous, and I appreciate it. All the debates that we've had, going back and forth on many issues, but you certainly made me think. Earlier this evening, Council President Cruz mentioned the passing of two individuals. And I'd just like to take another moment to talk about both of them. Mrs. Eileen Feldman, all year long, winter, summer, rain, snow, every time we needed folks for our, as part of our SERP team, our emergency preparedness, she was there. She was also very supportive of the Veterans Commission. She put in years and years of time into being a volunteer for the city of Southfield. We will miss Mrs. Feldman. And then John Adams, who is the founder of the Southfield Parks and Garden Club, created a team of people who, this is not a typical garden club. They don't sit around and discuss tea roses and daylilies. They're a working club. And John has organized this club, including the Emanuel, the Community Garden at Emanuel Lutheran Church, which provides thousands of pounds of fresh, organically grown food to forgotten harvests. The chore houses that we've helped senior residents or handicapped residents maintain their yards, trail cleaning, litter pickup, and the Southfield, annual Southfield Garden Walk. John did a lot, and as you remember, he was recipient a year or two ago of the Greg Kennedy Award. John has been ailing this last year, and we're sorry to see him pass. On a brighter note, we have another big concert coming up. And ask people to mark their calendar for July 9th, from roughly 6:00 to 10:30 p.m. I'm sorry. Sorry, we're in July. August, thank you, thank you. Somebody's listening. August 9th, Friday, August 9th, Kimmy Horn will return from approximately 6:00 to 10:30 p.m. And on Saturday, July, there I go again, August 10th. August 10th, from approximately 3:00 to 10:30 p.m., the concert will return to the front lawn. A lot of preparations are already underway for this event, and we're looking forward to another tremendous jazz concert on the front lawn. More to follow. Thank you.
All I want to know is, is Councilwoman Morris performing again this year?
No, I'm going to be out of town.
Going to be off.
On vacation with my family.
We still got to come out and support.
Next time.
That's right. All right, very good. Mr. Zorn, administration?
Yes, in your council packet, following the public hearing, there's an administrator's request, necessity for special assessment project, street lighting 1151, for street light installation at Greenfield and Stratford Drive. There is a recommended resolution. I'm asking council to adopt that. I'll read that in, for the record, be it resolved that the city council, the city of Southfield, does hereby adopt standard special assessment resolutions three and four in connection with special assessment project SL 1151, street lighting installation at Greenfield and Stratford Drive, which declares the public improvement a necessity and approves the construction plans. Be it further resolved that the council does hereby set August 12th as the date of the hearing of confirmation to review and receive public comment on the project and confirm the special assessment role, special assessment district project SL 1151.
So moved?
Support.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we approve the special assessment project for the street light installation at Greenfield and Stratford Drive. Are there any questions?
Set the date for public hearing?
With the date of August 12th, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yep, okay. The date of August 12th, 2019. All right. Any other, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? August 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no other business this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Attorney?
Thank you. If you will recall, last week on July 18, I'm sorry, July 8th, we introduced the amendment to our animal control ordinance, suggested through the Finance Committee. And it strengthened several provisions of our current animal control ordinance, and we are asking that it be adopted by this council.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Brightwell?
I'm moved that ordinance number 1705 be introduced.
Support.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by...
Don't we have to approve the amendment first?
Amendment first, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, you do have to approve the amendments first that were discussed last week. If you would like me to delineate what they are, I can do that again. We talked about, we add the definition of a fierce or vicious animal to the definition sections. We enhanced reckless cruelty to animals. We allowed for second or third offense tickets for harboring barking dogs. And we increased the penalties for stray dogs or cats. And we also allow for the waiver of a citation if someone is actually able to come in and produce the license, if they were not able to produce it upon an encounter with the animal control officer.
I make a motion that we approve the amendments to the animal control ordinance.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve the amendments to the animal control ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Mr. Chair? I think we've been...
Yeah, go ahead.
I move that ordinance number 1705 be introduced.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Frazier.
Amended?
Is this being enacted, entered? Enacted and introduced? Well, it just has on here, just to introduce. So is that all you're asking us to do, is introduce it tonight? Okay. That we just introduce ordinance number 1705, amendment to animal control ordinance. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance is introduced. Anything else on the Attorney's Office?
Nothing else, thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have anything this evening?
Just wanted to make the announcement that this weekend is the Southfield Community Festival at Hope Methodist Church, starting from July 18th to the 21st. And all-day ride tickets are only $13 up until today.
All right, very good. Yeah, that's always a great event.
And one last thing, I'm sorry.
Yes.
To Myron, I think that we've had our share of fun conversations, and I'm new to the bunch as far as our relationship, but I do appreciate all your wisdom that you instilled. And the millennials, we got your back.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Treasurer?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to also echo my thanks for many, many years of service that Councilman Frazier has given to the city of Southfield. His wealth and wisdom, of wealth of knowledge, has been tremendous and will be sorely missed. So...
Thank you.
Good luck with everything he can do. I wanted to also let the viewing audience know that the tax bills were sent out for the summer of 2019, and hopefully, everyone has received it by now. If anyone needs a copy of a tax bill, we have it available online. We have it at taxes.cityofsouthfield.com. As well as also, if a copy needs to be sent, we can always contact the Treasurer's Department, And we'll be happy to have a copy mailed to you. Not receiving a copy of a tax bill is not an excuse for not paying a tax bill. So please, make sure the deadline for paying tax bills is August 31st of this year. We also offer an extension available for people that are either disabled, seniors or veterans that are age, seniors are considered age 62 or older, and household income is below $40,000 in the total household income. As long as it's also the primary residence, we have an application that's available. They can apply up until September 14th for that extension. And we encourage anyone that may know someone that can qualify to take advantage of it. It allows them to extend the time to pay their summer taxes all the way until February. And we've even worked with the Oakland County Treasurer's Department to extend that till April of the following year. So definitely, we want to have people not have to have the problem of having to write that bit large check if they're financially having challenges, and we'll be happy to work with you on that. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Norbert. We got one ordinance to enact.
Mr. Chair? I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number 1704.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we enact ordinance number 1704, rezoning request of decor construction. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Ordinance is enacted. I inadvertently missed one person under communication, so I want to ask her to come up before we adjourn, Ms. Charlene Flueker. If she can come forward. And my apologies, we didn't get your request online until a little late, so.
Hello, my name is Charlene Flueker. My address is 24693 Pembroke Drive, Southfield, Michigan, 4033. I'd just like to state that for last year, I was not informed nor notified of any voting for amendment changes at Lockmore Homeowners Association. I did not vote at all. I was not informed of a vote. I did not know the amendments were being changed until a neighbor emailed me and brought it to my attention. And also, there have been plenty of code enforcements throughout the years and violations within the Lockmore subdivision and with the president, Constance Bell. And there have been people placed on the board. One, for instance, Deborah Donald, had a lien placed on her home in August the 5th, 2008, by the builder, the first builder. And the lien was removed last year by the board members illegally, normans by attorney. And also, there was 11 years of late fees, which each and every homeowner have to pay their late fees. That's within the bylaws. Ms. Deborah Donald has not, up to today, has not paid those late fees, which is an estimated figure, a little bit over $3,000, which I'm current on everything, always has been. But other homeowners that were not current, and they were sent to collection agencies and liens placed on their homes, which I have documentation, they had to pay those late fees. And this is also stated in the bylaws as well. And then the budget sheet for 2019, the vendors, insurance, farmers, they were listed higher in prices increased than what they really were. And I have documentation of that. For instance, farmers, I think it was 18, and I contacted and spoke directly with the agent as well, it was like 13-something. So all the prices were increased. And then there was no justification for the association increase from 16 to $1,000. And I know, I have called code enforcement plenty of times. I have spoken with the mayor plenty of times, have run the letters, bowched snow, ice, the road, potholes, et cetera, numerous times, enormous violations. And again, just people placed on the board, this fighting between the board and Darren Chase, he has not decreased the values of the home. If anything, the values have increased, the values of each and every home in the Lockmore subdivision. So this fighting going back and forth, it's a power thing with Ms. Bell. And like I said, she does not take care of the association. She does not take care of Lockmore whatsoever. Just horrible. If I had not called about the trees and so much more, it would be just horrible in a city like this of Southfield. And again, I did not vote for the amendments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And again, we apologize for missing you earlier today. All right, council, do you have anything else for the good of the order? Otherwise, meeting adjourned.